Let's see, we've got. I think we got, we got four people with you Gary, we have three people in the room as you can see, and yourself, so that's a quorum. And I think we have Gary Robinson's on. I'll, Gary, are you there? Gary?
I am here.
Okay, so Gary Endo, we have Gary Robinson out as our first applicant, so if you want to, I don't know, who wants to start the meeting here, who wants? Okay, Matt will chair from the room here, so.
Thank you, Matt, I appreciate it.
So in the room, is that Justin and Scott?
Yeah, yeah, Justin and Scott, and Scott and Matthew, obviously. And Kevin is not here at all, Kevin is not attending at all.
Okay, thank you.
So first off, I've got a fairly little bit of procedure, you haven't done it quite, I've done this before, so I'll probably make a couple of mistakes, I apologize for that, but we'll get through it. Seven o'clock, right? All right, so let's start the meeting, I think Jim has mentioned it pretty much here. I guess first order of business would be to review the notes from November. Unfortunately, I was not here, so I can't really participate. I'm going to add my comments and my tricks to it now, so it's as well.
I will refuse as well, because I was also not intended to.
We might not be able to take action, and.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to review them.
Okay.
And then again, I apologize, we're not the last meeting, we've been doing the old business, you see, Gary, I think we're ready to go. All right, so with that, we'll start off with the first applicant, looks like it's appeal number 835. We have a request of Down Contracting LLC, a 33 acre lot with the nearest corners. They're looking for an area variance pursuant to chapter 149, Article 5, section 149-59, Town Hall 267B. The applicant is promoting to create a five lot subdivision with a common driveway with his three lots, but not frontage on public street. This property is located in 305 to 309 Rutherford, in the rural New York, it's a part of two zone. One, two family residential district, has been designated as 6.3, I'm sorry, 63.4-4-56, on the town.
Could you note that we just started the recording, so?
Yes, and the recording has just started, all we've done is we tabled the meeting notes from November, we don't have any idea to the outcome of those, and I just simply read the appeal, number 835, to the record. So going through this, we have the application here, and I guess, I apologize, is it?
The authorized agent is Gary Robinson for the applicant, we have the agent form.
All right, Gary's on the phone, so, yes, Gary, typically, we just kind of briefly ran through this stuff, we've had it for a minute. I've kind of looked over it, but I'd just like, if you don't mind, you can give us your brief overview, kind of give us a quick synopsis, and then, Gary, I know, do you have any other questions?
Well, I'm Gary Robinson, I represent Dental Contracting, and as I think you guys already said, we've got about a five acre lot. It's located on 197, and it's not far from Route 32. Sits in front of a couple subdivisions that Gardner-Conan did over the past many years, I guess. And what we're looking to do is subdivide it. We were, we looked at many different options with it, as you can see, the lot is kind of an odd shaped lot, so it's not easy to put a subdivision together there. And one of the issues that we were dealing with was we wanted to limit the amount of driveways that we had come out on Route 197, and the reason being, I think, I think the biggest one was the traffic, the traffic is, it's either a 55 zone right there, or it's just coming out of a 55 zone. And I've been there a lot at a town hall, and I've seen an awful lot of traffic go through there, a lot more than 55 miles an hour, but. And, you know, there's a couple other things that came into our, you know, us looking to get a variance, one was that I know, I know that DOT would not be interested in us having more than one driveway, they think that would be a good thing. I know that Paul Joseph wouldn't be interested in us having a short town road that had a cul-de-sac to service lots. And I think that, the other thing is that it would, we looked at doing something like was done out on Route 32, where they used flag lots, and we did, you know, we could, we could do something like that, but again, we'd have so many driveways that were so close to each other, and we just felt that this was a better way. It's, it's got quite a few advantages, one being that we can, that driveway being a common driveway, which is what we're here the variance for, right, is because three of those lots would not have frontage on a town road, or a highway, I guess. So, but advantage would be that, you know, there's, there's just one, one road coming out on there, and that we we would meet all the requirements, all the other requirements of the lots, except for that. I think the fire department would like it, it gives access to all the lots, whereas, and it's very easy, and the road will be wide, the air driveway will be wide. And there'll be a place to turn around, and there is a hydrant right there in the front, we'll probably end up putting a hydrant in the rear of the parcel. Things that we wouldn't do if we had a, you know, just a flag lots, but we, so I, so I guess what I'm saying is, we're just, we're just looking for that fact that the three lots wouldn't have frontage on a town road. I just think it would be better than us having flag lots there, and trying to make that work with so many driveways. I don't know if anybody has any questions, those are, you know, the high points of what we're looking to do.
I guess, I just wanted to chime in at the outset here, as a staff person, you know, we've gotten better with these private driveway shared lots. And it, and it's become, I've, we've done a couple of them now, since I've been here, and what we look for is it can be done, and Gary is right, there is a principal advantage of not so many curb cuts, you know, especially on a state route. So that is a, that is a big advantage. So what we look for, if this does go through, first of all, this will be the first step of this, then it's obviously got to go out to the planning board for subdivision to properly create the lots, but what we're going to look for is a shared maintenance agreement over the driveway, for the all lots that are going to be accessing through that accessway, which I think is going to be outside of them. And so that's in the form of an agreement, we want to make sure those, those cross easements that are properly recorded into a deed, because what's going to actually have to happen here is that if this isn't just a five lot, then this driveway is going to be, the, the area that the driveway actually is physically located on is going to be on, or looks like, you know, each of these lots, so there's going to have to be proper rights of crossing in the, in the form of easements, and the deed free to the lots, and that type of thing, so we get this properly recorded, you know, and and once it's in the deed, it's there. And then the other thing we'd like to see as a general rule is just a disclosure that's provided at the time of sale, that the buyer is aware that they are sharing a driveway, it's not their property, so it is shared. And then as a practical matter, I think I said this to Gary, we also like to see a letter from the fire department, you know, that the driveway is accessible as designed, and when it's just wording into a subdivision, we're going to look for a beefed up, you know, cross section on the road on the driveway itself to bear the extra weight of the truck, the buyer truck, that kind of thing. And then my, my remaining question on this one is, from my point of view, is I didn't know what area A and B meant. Are those other lots, Gary, or what's happening with all those areas?
The, the plan is that those lots would be, have a boundary line agreement, and they would be given to the lots that are next door. And apparently, there's already been some homework done on that, and those, that is something that would be acceptable.
Well, that'd be fantastic, actually, so, because there are a couple things that need some cleanup, you know, and this would go a long ways to cleaning that up, you know. So these would be incorporated into lots of this subdivision, or other neighboring lots?
Neighboring lots.
Okay. Okay. So it's not a seven lot subdivision?
No, no, it's not.
Okay.
Just, just so you know, we, we have done, I, you know, two off the top of my head, but we've probably done six or seven of these common driveway ones, and we have an attorney that writes these shared maintenance agreements for us. And he does, he does a great job, and we've got one in the town of Wilton, and we have one in the town of Stillwater, the two most recent ones I've done. And they've, they've worked out great, we haven't had any issues with them, they're all similar. And I would say that both of those are probably three times the side, the length of this one, they're, they're huge lot, they're actually.
There's a, there's an example, there's an example here just around the corner, on, I think it's Route 32, Gander Road there. Scott McKenna developed those, I think it was four lots back in there, and it turned out really nice. And it looks, looks really good, it was well done, and that's an example of what, and that was done under the approach I just outlined. And it's appeared to work out very well. And, and we are then, we only have one access point on the Gander Road for those four lots, so. That's an example, if you want to see one in real life, almost recently, that was done, that was done just in the last two or three years.
Well, and that was my question, Gary, the first thing, I mean, one of the best ways to deal with this is it is a maintenance concern, unfortunately, and just that becomes a safety concern. So the other way to get around that becomes an HOA. Have you guys thought about doing an HOA agreement where the actual maintenance of that road is taken care of by the HOA? Because I'm looking at your turnaround, and either the plow trucks could be able to turn around there, fire trucks not be able to turn around, and that little turnaround that you have there. So I don't think that the road layout should work the way that you have it, first off. But second off, what do you think about maintenance, how would you share the agreement that you've done in the past, how would the maintenance of that road affect?
What happens is the owners that are along that road would each share the maintenance of that road. And we have that in the agreement. It's, you know, it's, it's plowing, it's maintaining it, it's doing whatever.
Is this, is it to be paved, Gary?
Pardon?
Will, will it be paved or grounded?
Yes, no, it would be paved.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then to Jim's other point.
Does the agreement specify, does the maintenance agreement specify the level of, of maintenance? In other words, we're going to have the fire department come in and look at this, and you're going to talk about weight and things for the trucks. Is that going to be part of it, you know, the maintenance agreement says they have to be up to that level?
Well, I mean, we've done, we've done dirt roads that are up to that level, but, you know, the, the pavement.
My point is, when, when the homeowner knows that they have to maintain this road to that level, that's the important thing for me.
Well, I, yeah, I don't, once, once the road's in, I don't think it will be an issue maintaining it to that level, I mean, there would be, you know, if planning board, we would have a, a cross section of that road that would meet the standards. And what we'll do is, we would also, at that time, we would deal with the planning board and the fire department, and making sure that that meets the, it's actually a part of the building code that talks about these, these fire accesses to lots that are not, don't have a driveway to the road. I think the fire department will be much happier not having long driveways to the back than they would having this one driveway all the way to the back, so.
The other thing that's done as, as part of the inspection process, if this were a shared driveway, upon the issuance of the first building permit for the first lot, driveway has to be installed, and the CO can be issued until the driveway is met specification.
Entire driveway.
Correct.
My, my concern with shared driveways is it, is it a way of avoiding building a road and, you know, a cul-de-sac, maybe, maybe the highway department wouldn't want to maintain another cul-de-sac, but a short cul-de-sac is not that bad, I mean, why is that not an alternative?
That was an alternative we looked at, and I can tell you, from working with Paul Joseph for many years, he does not want a short road with a cul-de-sac. It's, it's another thing that they have to maintain, they would be backing out, you know, coming back out onto the main road right there. I can tell you, we can, we could get a letter from Paul Joseph saying that he doesn't want that, I am sure.
Well, I don't think that they want to take over the road either, that's what I mean, coming back to maintenance, and maintenance, and maintenance, because these five lots are responsible for maintaining that road. It's a almost 400 foot road, it's not wide enough for fire trucks, you got a wide road, but it's minimum 25 foot, really 24. So anyway, a 400 foot road has to be maintained, when you get three feet of snow, if one of the guys decides not to do their part, then there could potentially be a house that's not accessible during the case for emergency. That's why a lot of it's to pay out, is I ask for an HOA, because that's a contractual obligation, because the entity will be maintaining that road under contract, and that it could be usually maintained regardless of whether one person sells their house, or one person decides to get stolen, or they don't live there for the winter. It's irregardless, that road will be guaranteed to be maintained. I think that's where they come in that maintenance, but we're not asking the town to take over the road, are you?
No, no.
Okay, so it's about maintaining the road.
We have that maintenance in our agreement, that, that's in the agreement, that they all have to pay the maintenance, and it has to be done every time. And there's, there's no way around it, the, the reason that, for, for these small things, HOAs are an issue, because it's, it's, it's an organizational issue, and nobody wants to be involved, and it's an expensive thing, and it has to be, let's see, it has to be like, not licensed by the state, but I think they have to approve an HOA.
Yes, they do, it's through the attorney general.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's a very expensive thing, it would, nobody, we wouldn't think of doing it. But we have that in our agreement, that it would be maintained every time, and all the owners would split that maintenance fee. So I, we've never had a problem, like I said, the, the last two that I did, one was in Stillwater, one was in Wilton. Never had an issue with that being a problem, but, again, not, not to say that somebody couldn't balk, and they could, you know, but, but it's a legal issue.
Yes, I guess my concern is, you know.
Is it right here, is that the turnaround?
Yeah, and then that whole camera's got the end, it's not going to hurt trucker, but car can get in now. That, that will have to be designed to be stable. Go ahead, Gary.
I, I'm, I'm a little bit of a disadvantage, because my computer wouldn't download the second part of this appeal, and I think you've got drawings in front of you that are better than what I have with the, the first part of the appeal. Because the drawing I have is just very sketchy. But my, you know, the thing is, it's this whole notion that, that we can't, we shouldn't do things like, you know, because, because it's a problem for the town maintenance to maintain it, it just, then we started getting into a whole lot of private driveways and private roads and things like that, and it just, then what ends up happening, and we've had it happen before, is the, the homeowners after a while come to us and say, well, you've got enforcers, and we can't, we can't enforce, because it's a private road or a private driveway, and it's a, you got, you got to sue the other homeowners. And then that becomes a problem down the road, and I just don't, I worry about that.
I mean, you're absolutely right, it is a private matter, it's, it's not something for the town to be involved in.
Well, but you're, you're talking about us, and we are involved, and we're, you know, it's just becoming, I just don't know why not, why not do this as a subdivision with one road off of Route 197, and just, you know, build it with a cul-de-sac and have the lots off of that.
I, I think, like I said, it, it, I, I don't believe Paul Joseph would be interested in taking it over. And I think this is a, an easier way to do it, we probably wouldn't do a cul-de-sac, it's, it's, it would be a costly adventure to do that. It would be very large on that lot, so we probably wouldn't, we would probably do flag lots.
What was the aversion to doing the flag lots, having a little road that came down, kind of turned into a T, you wouldn't have to go quite as far, and you wouldn't have the flag lots? Who was the, why are you guys trying to stay away from those, out of curiosity?
Just the number of driveways that we would have right there on 197. I'm thinking it's going to be a lot better if we have only one driveway. I think it's a lot better for fire accesses, which is an advantage to us too, that, you know, look, fire trucks can get right down in front of your house. Whereas if they have long driveways, flat, and a flag lot, it's harder for the truck to get down there.
I agree with having a common driveway, I'm wondering again about, again, the road you'll have to redesign, you get to that stage to get further down, to make it that far. So I appreciate that estimation, again, I think it's still, so the other option that you laid out was a two division subdivision, right, a two lot subdivision, so obviously it's not a deal for you guys, but. I don't know, Justin Scott, is there any question about five lot subdivision, you guys?
My, my only concern was the, was the access for fire, that was the primary concern I had. I, I understand the logic behind the single road, but I defer to you guys, because I have no experience, and certainly defer to Jim, because I have no experience. And that's.
The maintenance issue is, is an issue, because people may agree, you know, when they purchase a home, but then, you know, sometimes people.
Have a foreclosure, you know, a limited area.
Exactly. Somebody falls on, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the agreement would look like, so I, I can't speak to that, but that seems to be an issue.
And that's the other issue with the legal agreement, is that, again, if there was a particular lot that was moving to the back, they could be a lawsuit right now when there's a snowstorm, and the ambulance can't get there, the lawsuit doesn't help them in this instance. And I think the other areas you mentioned, you know, Stillwater, Wilton, there are a bit more roads in this area, so now, you know, just, there's going to be more trucks, there's more plows, there's more lifestyle. Here, why, and 197 is designed all the same style, those are beautiful SUVs that have never been on road. So as far as the actual maintenance and the plows, you know, I mean, that's just kind of the, I understand they'll have a subcontract agreement. But as you build this lot out, and that's, that's the cumbersome part of this, it's good for, for so long, until it isn't. So one of these people moves out, or until house goes to foreclosure, due to COVID, or whatever else, and then we find ourselves four people or three people trying to maintain the same road, so it just, it does become a problem, and people will complain to the town, even though they're, they're supposed to have an agreement of a, a property sold. And it's not disclosed, but, go ahead, Gary.
I'm, I'm thinking I agree with you, that people do can, I'm, I'm sure that the, the building department will tell you, they get several complaints, they have nothing to do with them all the time. And, and people would complain if that happened. We, we just haven't, in the ones that we've done, we haven't had that issue. When people, when a lot changes hands, that, that hasn't been an issue. The way that the agreement's written is that if somebody's not there, the other ones, like you say, if, if somebody has a foreclosure, and they're not there, what it says is if, if somebody is not paying, others do have to maintain the lot, or maintain the road. So I mean, that's, that is an agreement, but is that cumbersome? I don't know, I mean, would you not do it, I mean, if it was the guy in the end, then you wouldn't care. If it's everybody else, then, you know, you'd have to suck it up, and you, you know, you maintain the road.
Well, and then the one thing I would point out is that, once that agreement is signed by each of the five property owners, it is legally binding, it's a contractual agreement. So if someone's not fulfilling their fifth share, you know, their, their contractual will allow.
If, if you look at the, you know, if we did have flag lots, and we had lots in the back there, you've got somebody painting their driveway done that's a lot, lot longer, and it's going to be narrower than this would be. And I think, I don't know, I think it's, it just makes sense to have it combined, because.
Gary, the, the one thing I would suggest is, in that, in that subdivision that I cited, that's around the corner, that does have the shared driveway.
Yep.
They, they kind of did a hybrid of, of the two. The reason why that never came before this board is because they did have flag lots, and they met the 40 foot minimum frontage requirement. But rather than utilize the driveway for each of those flags, they, they joined the access into one shared driveway. So they didn't even come for the variance, but they still had the shared driveway issue, because they technically did meet the standard, they had the 40 foot of front. But they, they, they designed the subdivision to have a shared driveway.
Is that, okay, but is that one on 32 you're talking about now, was that maintained by the town, or is that just private as well?
Nope, nope, it's a, it's a, it's a, all the things were put in place, they have the, the shared rights of crossing and deed to the deeds, you know, easements for the benefit of the, the four respective owners, they have a maintenance agreement. And, you know, it's only been a couple of years, so, but we've not had any complaints from there, but it was as full as law.
That property you're talking about, Jim, they have adequate road frontage, they don't have, they just don't have driveways on them.
Correct.
Now, this property, this property does not have, well, not, would not have adequate road frontage. So we would be, we would be looking at an area, we're looking at an area variance because of that, it's the, it's the road frontage that's really the issue, is that correct?
Well, I, I, I think, Gary, that's true, but I, you know, Gary Robinson, I'm not the designer here, but I think you could probably, you probably could get a frontage for at least a couple of these, I would think, maybe one would actually be landlocked, but I, I think if you redesigned this with flags, I think you could get probably three, three, four lots would have frontage, and maybe one or two wouldn't.
We, we, yeah, and, and when, when we say that we don't meet the, the road frontage, that, that is exactly it. We still meet all the other requirements of the lots themselves, I mean, the lots would still have 125 foot minimum on this private road, or private driveway. It would still meet the bulk, all the bulk and density.
And setbacks as well?
Pardon?
Setbacks as well?
All the, all the setbacks, it would meet all the setbacks from the private driveway, it would be just like.
What you're telling us, what you're telling us is that, you know, you could do a cul, a cul-de-sac, but that's really undesirable. You could do, you could do flag lots, but, you know, myself, I, I don't, I don't like flag lots, and I, I agree on that, especially on that road, it's a bad idea. So those are the two alternatives. And I'm inclined to say, you know, given that, that you do have a specific hardship, and it's, maybe this is the best way to go.
I, I agree with the sentiment about the multiple driveways, I really like Jim's idea about doing flag lots, yet still having a shared common driveway. I think that makes a lot of good sense. As far as the cul-de-sac, though, really the only problem with that is if you either lose a lot, or reduce the size of those lots. But there's not really a detriment, that's a, it's against the cost of which you're insured, but it doesn't, that's not hardship in my definition. There's, you're going to make money on these lots, that's the intent, so money being part of the issue, I mean, that's, that's not a hardship, you're making money. So I don't necessarily agree with the cul-de-sac couldn't be put in here, but again, I know the way it's designed, it has to be changed anyway, because this, this will not be sufficient. So I guess that is, I mean, I kind of think the same thing as, as Jim, I think, I don't know, I don't want to speak for everybody, but in my personal opinion, we have two lots, lot three and lot four are completely landlocked, the only road they have is a private road. You know, there, these are two lots that are going to create a situation here, I guess, I think can create issues down the road, I understand, oh probability, how, how probability? You know, there, these are two lots that are going to create a situation here. Um, I guess I think it can create issues down the road. I understand both probability, how, high probability. I, I don't think anybody's going to say that, to be honest with you, but, uh, we can all tell horror stories. I'm sure Jim's had some town board meetings that he had on the bar there. Uh, so I'm just, I just don't like that there's two completely landlocked lots. They, you know, they're tied.
And three in the design.
Three technically, yes, yes. Like three, two, two is also landlocked. So it just, it just makes for, again, I do wonder if there's some sort of compromise. Because again, two lots, I understand the point. You have two oversized lots, it's difficult to sell, difficult to reap your money, understand. Uh, but can this, are we going to give them a cul-de-sac and get away with four lots? Or lot four is actually quite large. Can a cul-de-sac be accommodated? Um, again, something else that just doesn't have a dead-end driveway that we have here. And I don't know if you have to lose a lot, shrink a lot, I'm not a land designer, but, um, I do kind of agree with a, a common driveway. Uh, but I do agree with maybe a hybrid approach might be the way to go. Maybe you still can get five lots, but not in this orientation.
I, I mean, I think the hardship is the dimensions of the lot, the way the lot is, you know, all cut up to start. It's, you know, it's got, it's a funny shaped thing, kind of almost like a T or something. But it, it seems to me if we're, if we're looking to do a common driveway anyway, and we're just going to get around it by making it a flag lot, and then we're going to have two lots that are fronting, now we're going to have three driveways that are actually going to come out onto, uh, onto the main road. And it just seems to me that, that, that would be undesirable to me when we're still going to have a common driveway with the potential issues that we have with this one.
Again, I don't think, uh, no one disagrees. We don't want any more than one lots. We're kind of, if this goes forward, we kind of all agree that it will be a shared drive. The question is the maintenance agreement. We'd like to see some more information on that. We have a lot of questions. Uh, we have, I know Jim has seen them, but Justin, myself, Scott has not. Uh, so we'd like to see that. Again, I also, I think the cul-de-sac is going to be required. So it's hard for me to judge on this without having the planning board or fire, uh, fire department, uh, view. Because again, I'm trying to approve something that I don't feel actually works the way it's drawn. It just, that's a real problem for me. This doesn't appear to have proper turnaround for a fire truck. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't seem, so again, I don't know, one thing costs. I don't really see what the hardship is. Um, again, the size of the lot, because it's been fine. You knew that when you bought it. So I don't know if that's a hardship. Um, so I don't know.
I'd like to see, I agree. I, I, now granted, I am new at this, but I, I went there and I looked at it and I kind of spent some time there. And I just had a hard time envisioning this as it's drawn here. I guess what I would say is maybe if we could see a little bit more detail, um, especially with the, with the driveway and the turnaround, those were my issues specifically to Matt's point. Well, Gary, so what I'm hearing is, um, some further information. Can, can you get a, like a, a template or a draft of the maintenance agreement?
Sure, sure. Yep.
Um, and then I, I think, I understand what you did here. You're, you know, you know, what I've invested a lot of time in designing when you're, when you're seeking a variance and we're not at subdivision yet, but what I'm hearing is some further detail on the design of this driveway and making sure that the vehicles that have to, um, maneuver it can. In other words, you know, the, the length of a fire truck. Um, I know it's not going to be a town plow truck, but it'll be some heavy-duty vehicle that's going to contractually plow this driveway. So, you know, can we get, you know, a design that actually supports maneuvering those sized vehicles in?
Um, yeah, I think we can do that. Sure.
I mean, you, you, you're going to have, if this is successful, you're going to have to do that for the planning board anyhow.
Right.
You're going to have to take it to that level of detail. We're just asking to advance that. So I'm, what I'm hearing here is the board members want some more assurance. This is in fact, you know, work.
Okay.
Mr. Robinson, I just want to let you know, I mean, it's, uh, while I, I'm, I don't want to give you a hard time about this, but really this is, it's not totally unique and I know you've done it before, but, um, I think we don't want shared driveways if we can avoid them. We don't want, you know, we don't want private roads if we can avoid them and we don't want landlocked lots if we can avoid them. So there, there's got to be a, a good reason for approving. Okay? And so the more information we have, the better.
Okay.
And then the other thing, and I think I said this to you before, Gary Robinson, that we, you know, we need a, you know, we're going to need some indications from the fire department that this is in fact, you know, acceptable.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, um, we'll get to the, we'll get to the fire department. We'll get to, um, uh, Paul, um, and, uh, we'll probably talk with DOT also.
I mean, it, it's pretty easy to, to, to put a, a hammerhead in here that's going to work. I, you got, you got to move the work in there with that lot four. So we, we just need to make sure that there's a, you know, a radius and a dimension there that's going to accommodate, you know, the turnaround.
Right, right. Yeah. It's, it's a standard, right? E- either way, a planning board, we would do that. That's a requirement of the building code and we have to do that. And we would do that, but we'll do it, we'll do it now. We, we should have had it on there to start.
And that, and then you're right. Paul, Paul Joseph is going to be involved from the standpoint of he's going to have to, well, no, this is, this is 197. You're going to need a driveway permit from the state.
Right.
So I, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to at least make that inquiry and, and get some sort of, uh, you know, conceptual, you know, approval from the state or, you know, indications. This is a, this is, they're going to give you a permit.
We'll, we'll do that. We'll do that.
Uh, the other thing, Matt, is we did have a public hearing scheduled on this tonight.
Um, one last thing, Gary Robinson, when you make those notes, right now, there's no real spot to put the stone at the end of that hammerhead. Just make sure we kind of accommodate that because right now, tunneling storm is going to win. Uh, but yes, thank you, Jim. Uh, I can't see the screen. So, uh, like the open and under public house, are there any other questions for the board before we do that?
Is there any of the feedbacks in the town from the public?
No, we didn't, we get, we did, we did not receive anything in writing to the file, but I do see some people on here. I don't know if they're here for this. We have a second application with a second public hearing, but, um, so you're, you're opening the, you're opening the hearing, Matt?
I have to thank the board, yes. Let's do that, please. We don't have the public hearing.
All right. Anybody on the, uh, on the meeting list here, if you could raise your hand, if you're here to speak on this application? Uh, just raise your hand. Okay. We have a, a Robert Barodi. Robert, are you there? Robert?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Are, are you here for this public hearing?
Um, you know, I just, because I own the adjoining property, I believe, I think these lots back up to the Reynolds Road Rifle Club, which used to be the Glanoga Rifle Club. Am I correct?
I think so, yes. Um.
My address is 311 Reynolds Road on that club. So, uh, I'm guessing it backs up to that.
Yeah, I, I, I would imagine you're correct.
Right. Well, my, my only concern, I don't have any problem with anybody doing any building, but I always like to put forward, the club was there first. Don't build houses and then want to shut the club down, you know, that's. Always have to put my two cents. So, um, yeah, other than that, I don't have any objections or whatever you guys approved there. I just, like I say, when this dental contracting sells these houses, I want to make sure they know that I'm there.
Okay. I, I, we, I've, I've worked with, uh, Development Next to Gun Club before and that's a, it's a basic uniform concern. Yeah, I, I understand.
When we did the Baker development by the blasting, by the, uh, Glensville cement, we had that put into the plat, that they were next to the blasting area.
Yeah, and, and we would do that. We would put that note on.
Okay, there you go.
That's pretty much all I had to say. So, um, I mean, unless you have some questions for me, I'll just lower my hand.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Is there anybody else on the list here that's here for this application? Please raise your hand. Going once, going twice? I don't see anybody additionally indicating.
All right. So this time we'll close the public hearing. Um, I guess I'll leave it to the board for any. Sounds like, uh, I mean, I, I would feel that we have enough information before we make a decision today. Do you have a second? So I would like to table this and I'd like to, I know we spoke about it a moment ago. Um, but basically what we'd like to do is we'd like to see some dimensions on the turnaround, illustrating the proper access. Uh, we'd like to see a draft agreement on the maintenance agreement. So we can just review that, make sure it's on the next cover. Uh, Mr. Martin suggested getting a preliminary review or indications from the, uh, from the state as far as per cut on 197. And we also made note that the, uh, adjacent property, the gun owner, like that, made, made clear and mentioned, uh, perhaps even the deed, that he was there and that is part of what we're filed into. Uh, other information, uh, we're looking for, you mentioned DEC. And then, did I miss anything else, gentlemen? I'm sorry, Fire Department? Yes, the Fire Department. Are we going to review with the Fire Department this time? Are we going to lay out the dimensions and show that it's adequate for a fire vehicle?
I, I think we'll do both. I think we'll, on the plan, we would put, we would put the new, uh, layout and we would take it to the Fire Department and say, is this adequate?
Yeah. And I would just like to add in that last thing. I think we're all agreeing that the common driveway is preferred. I think we just need kind of a hybrid to just set some of these concerns at ease. And, uh, again, we need that individual information over that most to get a better informed decision.
All right. So to recap, I've got five things. Maintenance agreement, a draft of it, uh, Fire Department correspondence or a letter from them saying that they reviewed this. They don't have a problem. Uh, detailed, uh, design on the turnaround, um, indication from the, or indication on the plat or in the deeds about the, uh, gun club location. And, uh, uh, indication from DOT that they're going to be all right with the access location.
Justin, Justin, just a procedural matter. I'm just wondering if we're going to table this, if we should leave the public hearing open.
I recommend that you do.
Yes. Okay. Do you have a second or do you want to do this?
Yeah, a resolution to that effect with a second.
I saw it.
Okay, we got a resolution, uh, made and, uh, seconded. So we call the roll. Trish?
Yes, one second. Uh, Mr., Mr. Endall?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
So we're good.
Okay. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Jim, I'll probably be in to talk to you.
Okay. Well, town hall's closed, but, um, you, um, we can talk over the phone if you'd like.
Okay. All right. That sounds good.
Hopefully we, we reopen soon, but for now it's phone call only.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, Kim.
Moving on, Pino number 836. Uh, this is a request of Terry, uh, Terry Joe Dash Nicholson and Jeffrey Nicholson, uh, Nicholson of 202 Blue River Roads, out of Glensville. They have a special use permit. They're subject to chapter 141, our 5, second 149, next 33A, home location. The applicants are enrolled for the therapeutic massage office in the residence. This property is located in R2, 102 Family Residential District. It is designated as 50 point dash 2 dash 19 point 2 of Town Assessment Act. So do we have, uh, are there Terry or Jeffrey here or not?
We have Terry. I have a Terry Joe on the list. Terry, are you there?
Yes, we're both here.
Okay, great.
Um, so yeah, if you don't mind, if you can just kind of walk us through your application, explain us a little bit what we're trying to do and, uh, we'll kind of jump right into it.
Well, what we're looking to do is to move my massage practice into our home to better serve ourselves and my family and my clients. So, and I'm losing my space where I'm renting right now because they're selling the building. So we were eventually going to look into doing this, but found we needed to do it sooner. So.
So we have a 24 by 24 garage that we were going, we're gonna, we'd like to put a wall down. We still, we have an exterior door that we use to come into the house. I would build a wall, um, there so that we could still come in. Um, take the garage door off the front, put a 36-inch exterior door in there, into a waiting room. And then another wall there with another 36-inch door that would go into the treatment room. And then a 36-inch pocket door that would go from the waiting room into the hallway that we would walk into our house so that her clients could access our half-bath if need be.
Are you both in this profession or is it just the young lady?
It's just me.
Where are you, where are you currently located?
I rent a room at the Orthopedic and Spine Physical Therapy on Route 9.
How many clients do you have currently?
Well, it's, I, most of my clients come when they have an issue. So it's not like they're, I have a few that are regulars a couple of times a month, but most are, they come if they're having an issue. So it could be five a week. It could be 10 a week. It all depends on what's going on with them. Because most of my clients come, because I work in physical therapy for almost 30 years. And most of my clients come from my coworkers and I have a nurse practitioner that often sends people to me. I also contract with the Glensvilles Hospital Employee Health and see injured workers there. So.
So depending on, depending on the day or the week or the month, you could, uh.
Yeah. Because I work, I work full-time as a physical therapist assistant for the hospital. So this is just a part-time thing and hopefully my retirement thing.
I think, uh, to end on that, I'm sorry. Uh, just from a personal standpoint, uh, our chairman at home, you're just trying to guess the time to get it been around. Home occupancy has always been a, a sticking issue. With this only level, Gary and I go back to the time we dealt with one that was an old home and dog grooming business and it, uh, stretched out probably six months and it was very in-depth. And it gets to be a situation that is, uh, has a lot of, a lot of gray areas in my opinion too, when you take a business and try to put it into your home that's not in a commercial area. So there are a lot of, a lot of sticking points to this, this particular topic in my opinion. Agreed?
I'm inclined to think this is definitely a home occupation though, that it, it fits the definition. It's a professional service. You are a licensed massage therapist, am I correct?
Yes, I am. And I grew up in a household just around the corner from here that my mother was a beautician and had her business in the home.
Yeah. And, and basically service, service occupations that service one person at a time, um, tend to fit into that, that definition pretty well. And you're not planning on having a waiting room full of people?
No, and I never have had that. They might overlap for a minute, but the way that I schedule and especially with COVID issues now and following all those rules, you do not, I don't let them overlap anymore.
But even after COVID, you would not have walking.
No, because the one might be walking out the door as the other one's coming in. So.
But it's appointments. It's all by appointment.
Yes, yes. It's appointment only. I do not advertise because I work full-time too. I can't serve enough people on my own if I advertise. Everybody is referral either by prior clients or like I said, the practitioners that send them to me. It's not like, uh, what's that?
I was just asking you, and I think you might already have it here. Can you see that?
Yeah, sorry. The hours of operations, they're going, uh, looks like it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from mid-afternoon, like from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you're from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Is that right?
If, if I have somebody that needs a later appointment, because I work until 5:00 on those days. So I try not to take anybody then, but if there's a need, I would. Um, and weekends, I try not to work either, but occasionally I will have someone that needs a weekend, so.
So with the, the part of, again, of course, with the traffic concerns in and out, it doesn't sound like it's going to overly burden some, uh, or also worry about, um, the driveway. Uh, I was looking at the plans here, they're having a program to fit on 89511. So I guess I'm just curious, uh, your driveway, I assume you guys have at least one or two vehicles? You're going to have at least another vehicle coming in. Uh, so just curious, is your, uh, what's your setback? Is it large enough to accommodate four or five vehicles in that driveway? Do you not have to back out on the road, or?
Nope. We're 75 feet from the, from the road, and there is, um, the, the driveway is 60 feet wide right there. I actually put a basketball, uh, cording for my son there, and I never actually used it. So we use it as a turnaround. So I don't, I don't actually let people go on to my, out, back out onto this road, because this road is like 197 when you were talking earlier. Right here in front of my house, it's 55 mile an hour speed limit, and it's the only, on Bluebird Road, it's the only place. You got a 64-unit, uh, Home of the Good Shepherd right next door to me. People are trying to get in and out, and people, and they have a passing zone right here in front of my house. It's crazy. I, I'm going to actually go to Saratoga County, see if I can get the speed limit changed, because it's, it's just crazy here, so. But no, there is plenty of room for people to back out and to drive out.
Yeah, I apologize. I missed the note of the show in front of the garage on that quick, uh, uh, on that quick layout at the driveway. Yeah, that does make good sense. I s- I appreciate that. So it sounds like, again, if you'll accommodate some cars, you, uh, so that helps. You mentioned no advertising. I know the board's feeling is on signage, are you giving a small plaque here by the garage, or are you talking zero signage? You maybe know it's there unless you're going inside.
I don't really want a sign out by the road. If I did put a sign, it would be on the garage by the entrance for the people.
Yeah, so 75 feet wide, but, um.
You, you are entitled to a small sign.
And that's fine. I, I just, it's very easy to tell them where I am when you say you're the house right next to the Home of the Good Shepherd. We're pretty easy to find.
They have plenty of sign.
Just because you're entitled doesn't mean you have to put one up.
Right, okay.
Uh, another thing, and I just don't know your business well, and I apologize. One other thing we worry about sometimes, these, uh, these types of services, is any chemicals or therapy things of that nature? Is there anything you should be concerned with, or anything you use? It's, um, anything really? Like, is any kind of chemicals that have high VOC content or anything?
Not to my knowledge.
No.
Oh, I think I just get one of those questions sometimes, I'd be surprised. Uh, with the toughest ones we had, we do, uh, the dog grooming is actually tough. We do bar, uh, uh, kenneling easier than grooming, because the chemicals, um, just some strength and it can come up, and, you know, bars of outreach is always a concern. Uh, Scott, you kind of hit on that. Anything else you want to?
Uh, just, um, sign.
Chemicals.
What were the hours of operation?
Looks like she's, is it, is that right? I said that, I said mid-afternoon, we're talking about 2:00 till 7:00 p.m. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yes, and most of the time, it's, it's only for a couple hours. It's very rarely even till 7:00, so.
And then Thursday and Tuesday, your late nights, you go from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. is that right?
Six to eight.
Or six to eight, is that right?
Six to eight, if I, if I even see anybody on those days. That's just a, an if-needed thing.
Again, therapy and massage, I'm not expecting a lot of, nobody's using disturbance of the neighbors. I want to see that, your business, right?
It's pretty quiet, yes. Or it should be.
I ask it, we usually, we tell them to check the box. It's quiet, there's no chemicals. Therapy. Um, all right?
Changing the existing footprint, right? It's just.
All interior.
Okay.
Just add in walls.
And of course, you know, if we go further with this, you'll have to have that plan reviewed, uh, by the building inspector, just for egress, code compliance, structural concerns, so that all be reviewed at a time.
Yeah, that, that would be subject to a building permit when you make those changes to the garage.
Okay.
And it sounds like you can be a reasonable accommodations. They'll just want to check the sizes. You got the half-bath might be a concern there. Um, but again, you have access to it. It's covered access, shouldn't be any issue, as long as that access is wide enough. Um, but again, I prefer for those guys that are the pros of that area, so. But they will be a little concerned about that. So handwriting, review it on those stairs that you're showing, this is something that's contaminated.
And just as a procedural note of the board, uh, this is a type 2 action under SEER. Um, it's a commercial use under 4,000 square feet in an existing building, so. It's an exempt review.
That's a nice surprise, exempt, okay.
Yeah. I don't, I don't see any great issues with even like the hours. I mean, the hours we probably would not want to be open past 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, but other than that, I don't, I don't see an issue.
And are you? The, the, the main thing here is that it's a, it's a single-use, uh, service, you know, one person at a time.
Yes.
That's, that's the, that in my mind alleviates a lot of, uh, concerns I, I saw. We're going to have five or six people here at one time, and, you know, cars coming and going. This is a single-use, uh, single-user service, so.
Yeah, the traffic would be the major, biggest concern. I don't, as you say, I don't think that's a concern.
But at that phase, I don't see a, a big traffic concern or parking.
Agreed. All right, is there, uh, I believe we've asked most of our questions to the board. Is there anything else before we open that public hearing? Is there anyone for the public hearing?
On service side.
Okay.
Okay, you want to open that up?
Mr. Endall, are you all set? So we're open for the public hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, we're opening up to the, to the public for the public hearing. Is there anybody here for the hearing? Uh, could you raise your hand? I do see a couple people on the list. If anybody would like to comment, uh, please do so. Anybody there at all? We didn't have any written correspondence, I told you that. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't see anybody raising their hand here on, on those who are on the list. Yep, there appears to be no comment.
Thank you. Um, sorry, we've kind of answered our questions. I'm a bit excited to do. I think I'm kind of going to make a proposal, but I was hoping for discussion, any, any other things you should maybe, you should ask, or have attention. I really can't think about it now. Got any other concerns?
All right. Is it too much to ask if we ask, if we do approve this, if we do put a stipulation on, if we do hold her accountable for the hours that she's told us here?
I was going to say that, I agree with that. I do that, as well as the frequency, as well as the overlap, and then if anything were to change on the driveway, that that would be gone before the town starts access and see how that goes. Carly bridge in the ample driveway, allowing this app easily without interfering with that benefit by my own zone. So if anything were to happen, maybe we're to affect that directly, and want to ensure the town's aware.
I think that makes sense.
That's fair. So I guess with that, um, Mr. Endall, sorry, I can't see, it's hard for me to look in your eyes. Have you, uh, anything else you can look at?
Um, uh, I just one question. I mean, if we're going to limit to the hours that's stated here, those are very limited hours. Um, if she retires and wants to increase, do we need to have her come back?
Um, good question. She's only 54, so she's got a few years.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't see a need to come back, as long as the hours are.
And you were working.
If she retires, she can actually do it as a day job instead of a night job, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and I don't really see why you have to come back to us to do that. I mean, that's just, that's all.
I think when you put the middle time limitation, that maybe not address the daytime limitation.
Just say no later than.
Yeah, exactly. So I guess, I look at the bold motion, then we, uh, we authorize this variance to the long use occupants as described.
Special use permit.
Special use permit, uh, I think, uh, special use permit as applied for, uh, and then we have a stipulation that the working hours will remain, uh, prior to 8:00 p.m., that there won't be more than one to two clients at any given time, and that overlap will be kept to a minimum. Also, that the, uh, driveway becomes part of the variance, uh, and that we actually, um, that if anything is changed that affected that, that it has to be reviewed by the town again. And trying to think, really notes we had, I don't know, this is not previous, but.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
I'd like to close that motion then, please.
I'll second that, and I just want to put on the record as our appeal number 836.
We have a motion. We have a second. You want to call the board, Ms. Andrews?
Mr. Endall?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
All right. Okay, uh, Terry Joe, you're approved. Um, that marks the end of the proceeding.
Very good. So what's our next step? We go to the?
Uh, your next step would be, I, I'm going to send you a notice of approval, and I'll have it on the mail to you tomorrow, so you'll get it by the weekend. And then your next step would be to apply for a building permit for the, uh, uh, change in the garage, uh, interior configuration.
Okay.
And then, the, once that permit's reviewed, it gets issued, and you're, you're often making the, you're building the changes to the garage.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you guys.
Nice talking with you.
You too.
Um, this, this is a note to the board for next month. You're going to be getting a copy of the draft solar law for comment? So that'll be coming your way?
Well, the, we saw the PDFs, the OIA, I guess, are very, very in-depth.
All right. Any word on the draft, I know we're approving the comp plans. We're talking about zoning workshops, COVID kind of.
Well, I, I sent you the one draft. That's all that's been done, done so far. So if you have any comments on that, get them to me, you know, as soon as you can. And I'm going to have a second one out to you in the next couple of weeks. So this will be building on, one on the others. So if you, if you want to give me your comments in an email message, or if you want to, you know, make them and track changes in the document and send it to me, whatever you're comfortable with.
All right.
Thank you. What are we talking about as far as it relates to the first, uh, location flag lots?
Uh, basically, we do have a wedge lot that was 40 feet like this, and it goes out, and it kind of opens up. And so you have four driveways that are all kind of skewed, you know?
It's, it's like that, I think it's going to do it. You had, um, this kind of a thing, okay? What could have happened is.
Not real desirable.
This pulls up there like that, this goes back like that, so this lot.
And if you had a chance, Gary, to run through some of those notes, I know you were ready, added, looked through some of that, and I agree with you.
So they can't do all the schedules each time. Doesn't seem we made a lot of traffic either.
They don't have.
We adjourned.
Yes, we have, we've heard of any thoughts?
Chris doesn't want to make notes on this.
I cannot.
Uh, I know, I just mentioned, I think you got one like this, one like this, and these are totally land. So Mr. Martin's just describing a flag lot, uh, as referring to, you know, it's 835, Mr. Farrell, and you just grabbed that up.
Yeah, it was just instructional to one of, uh, Jeff had a question about what, what
like, uh, what a flagship lot is.
So with that, I think, uh, can we adjourn, Gary?
All right.
Thank God, Mike.
Morking to adjourn?
Gary, we expect to see you next time.
Oh, I'll be there. All right.
Bye, see you, Gary.
All right, take care.
Yeah, good night, everybody.
Good night.